We're just all coming over from the Brownfield meeting, Skip, so it might be a couple of minutes. The probably people are shit or stretching their legs and.
No problem.
And then I'll be announcing it once after the car show presentation, Skip, but everyone here understands how busy you are and how many meetings you're at. So no one's going to be worried if you click off it. Don't sit through all the budget amendments and those type of deals.
I hear enough of those on my own. No, I don't need to hang on. I trust you guys.
And for the council members that are just coming in, just to remind, I have started the recording. And it's about T minus one minute and we do have Rick and Ryan and I believe Carl will also be on the call.
It is seven o'clock. Good evening. Who are we missing?
We have, we have them all.
Oh, there's Michelle. We're good now. Well, it is seven o'clock right on the morning. Good job. Thank you all for attending. Regular session, Monday, May 17, 2021, meeting via electronic Zoom. Jim, do you want to talk about controls, phone controls now, or you want to wait till?
Um, we can wait until just before the citizen comments and then I'll explain that.
All right, excellent. We'll take this minute to do the pledge of allegiance. Here we go. Like blowing right through that, don't you?
That was one of the best we've ever done.
I agree.
I think Ryan and I are on the same cadence. I'm with you, Ryan.
I just figured it was because you guys know how much Skip supports music and in the arts.
Excellent. Well, we'll take a moment aside as well. We gather our thoughts here and then Jim, when you have a minute, if you do roll call, please.
Okay, roll call for May 17th, 2021 council meeting. Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
Trustee Holmes.
Here.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here.
Point of order, Mr. President, we need to make sure the records reflect that trustee Merrill is calling in from New Orleans, Louisiana, correct?
Yes.
And the best connection yet, so.
Wow, yeah.
So we have an agenda in front of you, in front of us as, are there any changes from staff at this time?
Yes, we have a total of five additions. I do apologize, the underneath the general consent agenda 10C, I've listed event request without the four events that will come in front of you. The first event is a Memorial Day parade on May 31st, 2021, 10:00 a.m. by the VFW Post 5189. They do have an appropriate COVID plan attached to that request. The second is a very, a program that we're going to be very proud to be involved in. Our police officers will be involved in the, with the Vicksburg District Library. We're partnering with a summer reading program that will be at the Historic Village Pavilion July 1st, 8th, and 15th. That request is by the library, but it is in partnership with the village of Vicksburg as we'll have staff participating as readers and predominantly uniformed police officers. The third is a graduation party, the Muncie graduation party. And the date of that event is 7/11/21 and it is for the Historic Village Pavilion. The fourth event request is the Vanderborre family picnic reunion for September 11th, again at the Historic Village Pavilion. The fifth item will be under 12, the village managers report 12B. I'll be giving an update to the council reference utility shut offs.
Does anyone else have a addition they'd like to make? I do have an addition I'd like to put at 11E and have a brief conversation on tree committee. So if everyone is satisfied with the agenda in front of us, I'd take a motion to approve the agenda, entertain a motion.
Reaster, I so moved.
This is Wagner, I support.
We're moving as amended, correct?
Correct.
Trustee Wagner with the motion or trustee Reaster with the motion, supported by trustee Wagner as verbally amended with those six points. Here, no further discussion, roll call vote. Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. So we have an agenda in front of us. Jim, do we have any, no, there's no one scheduled, no appearances scheduled tonight, any public officials, did John or anyone join us?
We do have one member of the press and three citizens on the call. We, we do not have public official appearances and I do not see anyone on, on the call and we have no scheduled appearances.
Well, we'll move into citizens comment and agenda, on the agenda and non-agenda items. If you would, please state your full name and no matter, let me your conversation to four minutes. Mr. Mallory will give you the pass codes to, to join in, so this would be the time to, to comment.
Yes, I, I believe everyone has logged in via computer and if so, you would move your cursor over the screen and you'll see at the bottom a hand with the words raise hand. If you do wish to address the council for four minutes, you would click on that button at the bottom of the computer, which will identify you as wanting to speak in front of the council. If anyone is on a telephone, how you would raise your hand is hit star nine. And then upon calling, we'll instruct you to hit star six to unmute. I'll pause and see if anyone on the computer again highlights with that cursor over your screen, look to the bottom. You'll see a hand with the words raise hand and click on that. So we'll give it a, your 10, 12 seconds. We do have five individuals, four individuals and a member of the press. And I do not see anyone raising the hand again, move the cursor, look at the bottom of the screen, you'll see the picture of the hand with the words raise hand. And I'm confident everyone on the call knows that. So back to you, Mr. Frisbee.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on. The Vicksburg Gold Car Festival application approval in front of us tonight. Knowles has joined us to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, if I can, on behalf of staff, we had, did ask Mr. Knowles to join us tonight and, and very thankful. In his busy schedule, he was able to make time for that. We've been meeting with Skip for probably now six weeks and before that, I think I bumped into him at Family Fair. We had a conversation, but Skip also has come to a couple of our infrastructure meetings Tuesdays at 10:00. So we had both the contractor and engineers there as well. We have forwarded to the council both the event organizers' plan as well as met today with Skip, provided documentation to the council that is based on last Friday, May 14th, distribution from the state of Michigan, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, MDHHS. In their recommendations, reference large outdoor events. We believe that we will be able to satisfactory, the event organizer will be able to satisfactory meet those expectations. And we also that want the council to be aware, we'll have weekly communication if protocols are such change from the state level. Full Skip and myself have talked to Vern Johnson with the county health department who has had input on, on the plan. Will, the three of us will more formally meet the week of June 7th to ensure that we're on pace to have the event organizers have, have an absolute safe event for the people who participate. But prior to turning it over to Skip, I did want the council to know that it is receiving staff recommendation for approval. And I'll, with that, I'll pass it over to Skip and then the two of us will be happy to answer any questions that you might have. So Mr. Knowles.
Thanks, Jim. Like Jim said, I, I kind of held off, so we're a little later than normal because, you know, when we had the acceleration in COVID through the spring, I was concerned where we were going to be. I started with a conversation with Vern Johnson. Just wanted to see what he thought and, and then we had another conversation here about two weeks ago. And Vern basically told me, just run the old car festival away. We've run it in the past with the COVID restrictions. And so that was kind of good news to us. We're doing a couple of things a little different. We're not going to be doing goodie bags for the car registrants, even though Vern reminded me that there's no proof of any transmission off contact services. But I know that there's probably a segment of the population still has a concern about that and out of respect for that, we've decided to not do goodie bags this year, just so people weren't concerned about who loaded the goodie bags and where they came from and those things. I have yet to get an answer about what's going to be going out at the Historic Village. I'm going to get a little more detail there. Obviously, if they're going to have their buildings open, then, then they'll have a little different situation they've got to deal with because they're going to have to, they'll be inside, you have to worry about social distancing and, and masks and things like that. And I'll be real clear with them and then get back with Jim, just, just so we know what, what they've got planned. But right as of right now, I don't know anything they've got planned. The tin can tourists, the old travel trailers, they were concerned what Michigan's rules were going to be. So they went ahead and accepted an invitation to an event, you know, in, I believe it was Ohio or Indiana. But plan on being back next year. Gas and steam engine show, I think is in that same situation. We may have a few guys that want to display, but I haven't had a contact from anybody with regard to that. The band boosters are going to be running the Clark Park Arts and Crafts shows they have for the last couple, three years. We gave it to them as a fundraiser. It's going to probably be limited in number and we're going to have those booths up in the street for the most part because we don't think we're going to have a large number and it just kind of keeps them out of the park because we never know what the soil conditions are going to be in the park. We don't get rain before that, even though we do need rain. As far as controlling cars and those things are going to be much the same as it's been, you know, over the years, we've almost got the distancing between the cars anyway because guys like to have their cars spaced so you don't have doors, hitting doors and, and doors being open with regard to that. So I don't really foresee any issue there. We are going to have live entertainment. I'm only going to set a hundred chairs up and we're going to have them kind of spaced so that they're in cohort groups. Just, just to be cautious, even though there's some probably gray area in the law because it's less than, it's, it's a hundred chairs, so it's less than a hundred people. Which doesn't come into a lot of limit, limitations, but I think it makes good sense for us to kind of set the chairs up in cohorts of four and six and have them spaced. Just to play it safe. I don't want to make anybody safe or sick from, from our vet. So we've got that same concern. The food vendors we've got this year are the same food vendors we've had for the last 30 years. Vern from the health department was very happy with that group of people. He works with them rarely, knows their facilities, knows, knows their cleanliness protocols and those things. And they'll also have hand sanitizing out by their vendor areas and will have hand sanitizers out by the registration area and other places where we might have people congregating. But pretty much it's going to be an old fashioned car festival. We're looking forward to giving our businesses a little boost before we close the street. I know I, my initial conversation with Jim is I want to see where he felt about that. And we were both kind of in same agreement that anything we could do to help the businesses after being shut down for COVID at least give them a good few days before we dig our trench down Main Street would help. So, you know, that's basically what we're hoping to do. I appreciate the cooperation with regard to the village and you know, also with regard to the timing on the construction project and the way they work from two ends meet in the middle. We'll hope it doesn't work out like the Milwaukee Bridge. I'll be happy to entertain any questions if you've got.
I would just like to make a comment that I talked with Skip this last weekend. The library has made a determination that at this point, the way we have to hold our book sale, it would not be as safe as we would like it to be and would be hard logistically to keep a certain number of people down. And then these people lined up and they wouldn't stay six feet apart. It was just going to be too much. So we won't be having the book sale during the old car festival, but next year we definitely will. This year, we're hoping possibly, we haven't made any determination yet, but we're hoping possibly to have it late summer, early fall.
But the good news is Gail gets to come down and enjoy the car festival.
There you go, for the first time, yeah.
Skip, Danny Olson, where, where's the music venue going to be?
Where we normally have it set up, it's right there, kind of the main four corners. It kind of comes off the building that we used to all know as hat and gown. Kind of where, you know, the We Diner was way when I'm dating myself.
Yeah, yeah, I remember too, so. Are you going to do the swap meet this year? You mentioned the craft, but you didn't say anything about swap meet.
Right now, I haven't got anybody interested in, in doing the craft or swap meet area. I have permission to do that over at Family Fair. We used to do it along Main Street there. I'd say if I have any over there, I'll have probably very few vendors. The problem is we're kind of late notice for some of those things because I just want to get the word out there and ended up having to cancel.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Guys are going too easy on me.
Oh, good.
I, I appreciated having your COVID protocols, the list. That was very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, Julie, I see you raised your hand.
I didn't know if it was going to happen or not, but it sounds like it's going to happen. And I guess my only question is if I had small kids, 12 and under, they hadn't been vaccinated because everybody else is more adult-like and they've had their chance to take care of business. And hopefully people got vaccinated, but the little kids still are kind of sketchy to me. So I don't know if I'd be hanging with them. That's about all I'm going to say. Yeah.
Okay. You know, we know from the schools and stuff that there's been hardly any incident in that age group and they tend to be asymptomatic. But I would hope parents would use whatever due care and caution that they feel is responsible for their kids.
Like it.
Any other questions for him? I, I will say that I've been quite pleased with Skip is being proactive as he has, you know, coming up with the COVID protocols and then with Mr. Mallory and Mr. Johnson and going over those plans and getting the review from them and the feedback. So this hasn't been taken lightly by any means. A lot of, a lot of discussion has been involved with the Skip and Jim and the, and the team. And, you know, a lot of Adam anxiousness perhaps on doing this, but it's the right time, you know, it's the right time for us as a community. We need to step out and get back to normal as soon as we can. So this is one big step for us all, I believe. And with, with the protocols they put in place, I, you know, things will come of this event. So I'm excited for it.
Thanks, Tim. I just want to say, you know, we've had, this is our 40th anniversary, which was supposed to be last year. But we've enjoyed wonderful cooperation with the village over that period of time. Jim and I communicate frequently on things like that and I appreciate Jim and Randy and Scott and everybody that I work with every time I've been involved with regarding the car festival. You know, it, it takes a lot of heads to come up with the right idea. And I've always told everybody, my ego is not fragile. If somebody else has a better idea or something, I'm all ears. And so, but we couldn't do it without the cooperation of the village and I've got to put a plug in for the schools too, because they provide a lot of assistance to us too. But Randy and the guys and the police department, we couldn't do it without them. So just my thanks to the village, the whole intent of car festivals, everybody knows. I'll just remind everybody was when we first did it, we wanted people to know where Vicksburg was because we didn't think we were on the way to anywhere. And we maintain the point that it's there for the good of the community. Profit and money making is not the goal. We try and break even on the car festival. But it's there to promote Vicksburg and help and assist the businesses and that's, that's the whole intent of the thing. And to have fun, baseball, hot dogs, apple pie, Chevrolet.
Not in that order necessarily. Now, appreciate it, Skip. I know it was a double duty for you this year and everything that was involved to make this happen. So I did, I will see what the council wishes are. If there's, we would approve the permit application for the old car show.
President Frisbee, trustee Wagner, I make a motion that we approve the Vicksburg Old Car Festival application.
Reaster, second.
Okay, I've recorded the motion by trustee Wagner and supported by trustee Reaster here. No further conversation or roll call vote. Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, seven to oh. I did mention to Skip, as many night meetings as he has, I'll give him a chance for final comments, but none of us will be offended with him clicking out of the Zoom meeting. He's heard plenty of budget amendments and that type of stuff. So Skip, any final thoughts?
I just want to say thank you and also tell all of you, if, if something pops in mind, you got a question or anything else, feel free to give me a call. I'd be more than happy to discuss anything that might come up. So if something comes up or you think of something, let me know. If you get a suggestion, I, like I said, am welcome and open to suggestions. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Skip.
Thanks, Skip.
Mr. Mr. Frisbee, on the next agenda item of the general consent agenda, I did want to make notes, so the record reflected. Trustee Wagner accurately contacted me, Mr. Gissler's name on the draft was misspelled. It will be corrected on the final minutes from last meeting.
Good catch, Ryan. I wasn't sure. I read Grizzler and I'm like, I don't think. So, good call. So with that, you know, that correction, if there was any other corrections or comments on the general. So don't make me read all the events, you know, I had them here on my phone. I don't know where they went. So the four events as Mr. Mallory presented, we have the warrant reports, our regular meeting, also meeting for May 3rd, 2021. And there was no other correspondence. So if the, could get, entertain a, a motion to approve the general consent agenda.
Trustee Keller, so moved as amended with the events.
Motion by trustee Pro Temp Keller.
Trustee Olson, my second.
Olson, seconds.
Motion for the approval of the consent agenda with the four event requests that were noted as well as the change in the minutes. President Pro Temp Keller made the motion supported by trustee Olson here. No further conversation, roll call vote. Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill. Trustee Olson.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
And President Frisbee.
Yes. Have in front of us some action items tonight. 11A is the 2120 budget, employee healthcare, medical, dental, vision, short-term life and accident, death and disability. So I'll let Mallory take it from here.
Yes, and to remind the council, these are items for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year that each, each season as we move towards June 28th, we bring different aspects of the, the budget in front of the council. So we are looking for support and approval tonight. It will again be listed in the budget that is also published at the start of June on a public notice. And we'll have the final vote at the end of June, but it helps certainly not having a five or six hour meeting on that June 28th. But is each year, we analyze the investment that the village makes as well as the healthcare plans and the, those benefits that each of the employees electing the benefits would receive. And a quick reminder. Um, and a quick reminder, back in um two thousand fifteen sixteen fiscal year, uh prior to my arrival, the healthcare costs were in excess of a hundred and sixty, just for medical, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We've reevaluated, we switched plans um a couple times in the last five fiscal years. We are presenting a plan that keeps with the current uh company, but I did want um uh, one, some numbers to help the council out with the twenty twenty-one fiscal year investment for medical coverage. We're talking just medical coverage is just a hundred and thirty-nine thousand and seventy-four dollars and twelve cents. So we uh looked at, uh, we utilize Nalti Insurance as a consultant in this area. And Chip Schaub up there uh is is a tremendous benefit to our team. Um, we changed employee medical coverage to Priority Health on July first, twenty twenty. Uh, the coverage is uh Priority Health, HMO, HSA two thousand. We requested uh quotes from not only Priority Health, but also Blue Care Network, two two different options within the Blue Care Network and United Healthcare. Um, the uh, we're recommending, as I said, to offer the same Priority Health medical coverage to our employees for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. That investment with Priority Health has a six point four percent increase in the cost. Um, and we anticipate it to be in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty cents. Uh, we did make note that the other coverages that were quoted were anywhere from a twenty-one point nine nine percent increase to twenty-two point four four percent increase in the investment. So we felt with the coverage that we uh offer employees with Priority Health, HMO, HSA uh medical coverage, um, that we would stick with that recommendation. We're also recommending that the village continue to offer healthcare utilizing the hard cap contribution limits under the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act. I have listed those amounts, uh, single person just over seven thousand, individual plus one, uh, just under fifteen thousand and a family coverage of nineteen thousand, two hundred. Uh, we'll be happy to answer any questions and looking for that motion to support and approve us into entering a contract with Priority Health. Then that gives them enough time to ensure that that coverage continues on July first.
I have a question, Jim. What what is the deductible for these people?
It's a higher level deductible, um, so I think it depends on on if it's a single plan or family, but uh Michelle might be able to help me out. I think the family love, I think it's four thousand and six thousand, so the employee exhausts that amount of money before um the insurance is is really fully.
Before it kicks in.
Right. Is that, Michelle, what?
Yeah, an individual is two thousand and a family deductible is four thousand. And then the total out of pocket for a single person is like six thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And um two or more family would be thirteen thousand, three hundred.
Thank you.
This is basically eighty-twenty up to that point, correct? More or less?
No, it's under the hard cap formula. It just has a higher deductible.
Yeah, you fulfill your deductible before the insurance usually kicks in.
Right, no, I understand. I know I know where I work, we have out-of-pocket our deductible, but then we have eighty-twenty up to total out-of-pocket, and then it's completely covered. So it's different, it's obviously a little different.
Yeah, so I think that it's one hundred percent out-of-pocket until deductible. Until that's been reached, it sounds like.
And then, once they reach that deductible amount, then then what does it cost them?
Well, it's it's pretty much after that point paid for, but there's some um and I'm just calling up the uh sheet in front of me now, so I don't misstate it.
Yeah, it looks like there's some variability based on what's actually being done at the time, what the co-pay eligibility is.
Correct, and it's part of the the uh documentation within the pocket, it's specifically Priority Health renewal. Uh, primary care, office visit thirty percent after deductible, specialist office visit thirty percent after deductible, telemedicine zero. Emergency room and in urgent care, thirty percent after deductible. Uh, prescriptions all vary in a range from five dollars to as much as twenty percent. In those twenty percent are for the Cadillac and and so on.
Okay, yeah, I see where you're getting that now, okay.
Hey, Jim, it's Rick. Just to clarify, this is for staff, this does not include public safety?
Um, well, it 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 in, our police department's part of the staff, so.
Well, I I I didn't mean, I didn't mean it to sound that way. I just under, I'm under the impression we have a uh an agreement, a contract with the that's different than this with it with the uh safety officers, where where they're getting, where there's a different policy or no, that's not correct.
I don't want to get caught up on public safety, because that would, that's a different definite. Are you talking the police department staff?
Yes.
Uh, that they're the same coverage, and that's what's articulated in their uh collective bargaining agreement, that they will have the same coverage as uh staff has, so.
Okay.
It 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 is the same.
Well, I thought there was a difference.
Well, and so, Jim, one quick question. So I know that we've got these hard cap limits on the expenses. Um, are we under that total hard cap? I didn't do the math on.
Yes, we are. Yes.
So we're fully funding and there's no out-of-pocket, like per paycheck for the staff for healthcare?
Correct. We're encouraging the staff to uh contribute to their HSA accounts, because the village does not have medical or healthcare coverage continue after after separation or retirement.
And so the village isn't making any contributions to HSAs, we're having the employees do that themselves?
Correct. That was one of the changes a couple of years ago. We moved from a gold to silver account, so so we're not required to and.
Thank you.
Any other questions uh on the medical? Jim, would you have us uh address each?
I would like to, yeah, I'd like to.
So we have uh village action item on the uh employee healthcare benefits for medical, twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, what is the uh? What would the uh?
The motion would be to support and approve the village manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Priority Health to offer medical coverage. Priority Health, HMO, HSA two thousand to Village of Vicksburg employees for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
Tom, awesome. Thank you. It's a pleasure of the council.
Trustee Keller, so moved.
Trustee Wagner, I support.
President Pro Temp Keller made the motion, supported by trustee Wagner, uh here, no further conversation. I'll take a roll call vote. The trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Next action item for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, this one, uh, we're recommending to stick with uh Delta Dental of Michigan for the dental health coverage. Um, it is point zero six of one percent, so a little bit less than one percent decrease in cost. Uh, with the same coverage, I have listed out what an employee, employee spouse, employee with a child and a family monthly rate is. Um, the total investment for the employees participating will be at uh just under fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars uh when the budget is presented. And we're looking uh for a motion to support and approve the village manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Delta Dental of Michigan to offer dental coverage to the Village of Vicksburg employees for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
It is a pleasure of the council. It's, uh, excuse me, if there's a conversation or discussion or question, feel free at this point.
Reaster, I so moved.
Holmes, second.
Motion made by trustee Reaster, supported by trustee Holmes. Here, no further conversation. Roll call vote, trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
The next item is Vision Healthcare. Uh, I am recommending to stick with the current plan of Principal Life Insurance Company. It will not have an increase for the Village of Vicksburg uh in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. That yearly investment is two thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um, after conversation, any questions, uh, looking for a motion to support and approve the village manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Principal Life Insurance Company to offer Vision Healthcare coverage to the Village of Vicksburg employees for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
I just have one quick question. Uh, on the vision insurance for the in and out of network, uh, is that something that you feel the staff is utilizing effectively right now, that benefit?
I haven't had any complaints of of vision care at all. Um.
No, that's good. It's just, it's not a provider I was familiar with, so I didn't know if we had, uh, you know, sufficient or agreeable coverage in that way.
Yeah, I think the the that is one avenue. They have to find a uh optometrist or whatever that that takes uh this insurance.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, they uh, his staff is asking for a motion, so what is a pleasure of the council?
Uh, trustee Wagner, I move to support and approve the village manager to enter into a contractual agreement with Principal Life Insurance Company to offer Vision Healthcare coverage to the Village of Vicksburg employees for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year.
Trustee Olson, my second.
Trustee Wagner with the motion, supported by trustee Olson. Here, no further conversation or questions, a roll call vote, trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson. I believe that was a yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Can we?
The next id- item is uh life insurance, long and short-term disability and um accidental death and dismemberment through the Unum Group. We uh competitively bid out this insurance and Unum remain the best investment. Uh, which for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year uh will be uh just over seven thousand, six hundred dollars, uh seven thousand, six hundred and six dollars and twenty cents. It is an increase of five hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-six cents from the current fiscal year. However, this is the first increase this company has uh given the Village of Vicksburg in over three fiscal years. We have broke down the individual um cost of that seven thousand, six hundred and six dollars between long-term, short-term life insurance and AD and D insurance. Uh, be happy to answer any questions, but looking for a motion to support and approve the village manager to enter into a contract agreement with Unum Group to offer long and short-term life and AD and D insurance coverage to the Village of Vicksburg employees for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
Merrill's support.
Okay, is that the motion by trustee Merrill or?
Yeah, I support that motion. I keep, I don't have wording in front of me.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Motion by trustee Merrill.
Trustee Olson, my second.
Supported by trustee Olson. There's any conversation or questions? Seeing and hearing none, uh, roll call vote, trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Motion passes. We've got the uh employee healthcare benefits, you know, I don't think any further discussion as we this will help expedite, you know, the process come June when we have to approve the overall budget, so. I appreciate Jim taking the time to go through these uh ahead of time, so. Uh, with that, we have a twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two full-year budget for capital improvements.
Correct, and uh on capital improvements, we'll also, uh, these are specific that we know impact the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Uh, however, prior to June twenty-eighth, we will also supply the council in a public meeting identifying uh the next three years current capital improvement projects that we have identified for the village and also how we're funding those. But as our goal was starting uh five years ago, is to put the village in a position that it could fully fund a capital plan, thus, if we can predict it, we can prevent it or save for it, and we limit so-called emergency spending within a fiscal year. Uh, there is one item that we'll be utilizing twenty-one, twenty-two tax revenue, but all the other items, as we go through them, have been saved for in the previous three fiscal years, so we'll be paying cash for the money that's been saved. Um, the these, uh, Mr. Frisbee could be approved singular or altogether, it's your preference. Um, but I'll pause after each one to answer any specific question. Um, the first is a twenty twenty-two Chevrolet twenty-five hundred pickup truck for the Department of Public Works. Our goal is to eventually, there's three pickup trucks of the DPW fleet. And if you, we want to be in a position to purchase a pickup truck every five years. So when we're buying pickup trucks, our, in the next round of purchases, so get us there, but we'll have a fifteen-year-old pickup truck, a ten-year-old one, and a five-year-old one. Um, the current pickup truck we're replacing is from two thousand and eight. So it's a little, it's it's one year shy, or you could, I guess, on the short end, look at about seven minutes shy of the fifteen-year mark, however, uh, I believe the it was a pickup truck that we moved from the the golf course. It was always under DPW purchase, but they had used it out at the golf course for a number of years. And it's in need of being replaced. Um, and the uh, uh, this pickup truck has always been identified, or this fiscal year, I should say, has always been identified to purchase a pickup truck. It's for an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, the funding sources are in two thousand nineteen, out of the, that fiscal year, we saved seven thousand, two hundred and fifty. In two thousand twenty, we saved nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty. And we saved uh uh last year, um, twelve thousand dollars, and I'm talking June or January. It's January how we assign money um in in the um fiscal year savings. Um, so you'll see that 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 adds up to thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. We have put contingency funding from twenty-one, twenty-two tax revenue in in the event that the plow mechanisms won't transfer from that oh eight western plow setup to the twenty-two. western plow setup to the twenty two pickup truck. If we will be selling the oh eight pickup truck for for revenue, we if, I stress, if that plow mechanism won't transfer, we'd still sell that. But we wanted to build in a contingency. But the bottom line is we we believe the pickup truck under the current my deals, we're not going to purchase it till January of twenty twenty two. We like going through halfway, just as we did the patrol car this year, see how our fiscal situation remains as we predict. And we think we'll be able to 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 secure the pickup truck for just under the thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars. So kind of got a little long-winded there, but be happy to answer any questions specific to the pickup truck.
You got a lot of confidence that even in twenty twenty two, we'll be able to find one. The way they are today, they're just, they're you know, the chip shortage we're having and yeah, they're selling everywhere. Just don't have them around anymore. But, you know, as you said, we've we've talked about this numerous times. We put that money in capital reserve for it. We've saved for it. We're in a good position to buy it. So it would be my my privilege just to go through all these five and make a a motion at the end. Unless, you know, one of the trustees has an issue with that.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Well, let's just continue, Mr. Mallory.
Okay, the next one's pretty important. We are making this investment in downtown. We have colored, specific sidewalk that's blended all the way through. Anyone who's been down at Liberty Lane east has seen where you run blades over it. It chips up at points. We have contacted other municipalities have have also worked. We're looking at. So this is a multi-use new piece of equipment for DPW that was motivated to be able to clear all sidewalks downtown first and foremost, but it is a twenty twenty two utility vehicle. It's a John Deere ten twenty five R tractor in the accessories of a blower, a brush, and a sixty inch mower. For an amount not to exceed thirty five thousand dollars. It's a utility tractor that has multipurpose functions. The necessity to purchase during this fiscal year is to ensure that we'll have proper equipment to plow the new downtown sidewalks. Currently, a quad slash blade plow vehicle is used, and we do not want to utilize a blade on the decorative sidewalks. It's recommended that a brush is used. And in the case of a higher amount of snowfall, a blower with appropriate skids raising the height off the sidewalk will be used. An additional feature of this tractor is that it will be used year round as a sixty inch mower, and there's plenty of of mowing. There is times that Alex and I assist in mowing, but we have three mowers and four DPW employees. So certainly we have more for everyone. The breakdown of the cost per my deals is, and this would be a purchase that we initiate on July first, if approved. To be able to secure this piece of equipment is broken down at the cost of the tractor, snow blower, snow brush, and mowing deck. The funding sources, we did put fifteen thousand dollars in an assignment back in January of twenty twenty one for this piece of equipment. And we also have saved money under assigned money under the category DPW heavy equipment. That current assignment has a, we would use twenty thousand dollars out of that assignment, leaving a balance of twenty five thousand dollars for for future needs. I'll pause there for any questions. The next item, we currently have a two thousand and eight front end loader that was purchased new by the Village of Vicksburg. It's still in engine wise, excellent shape. Two years ago, it might be three years ago, I believe we made a pretty good investment to in the tune of four to five thousand dollars to go stem to sterm, engine wise, all of the hoses and those type of needs. We've, we had, we got new tires last year for it. The next item is fenders. We believe this vehicle has has quite a lengthy tenure of use for the village. But after thirteen years, the fenders are fairly rusted out. A new front end loader is in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. What we're asked, we've put in is ten thousand dollars for new fenders for this unit. And again, that would come out of the capital assignment or the assigned money that we have for DPW heavy equipment. Ten thousand dollars, leaving that same balance down to fifteen thousand dollars. The next item is we are going to start construction here, hopefully in the next ten days on the building that has been approved, the new six thousand square foot building. It is going to be a black roof with I don't know if it's barn red, but it is a shade of red siding. We asked for a quote to put new tin up on the other two buildings to get them to match and update those. It was in excess of eighty five thousand dollars. So we went to a secondary source to look at appropriately painting them, the the current tin, the same color, which that came in in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. This source would be capital improvement utilizing twenty one, twenty two tax revenue that we do present each year in some fashion or another. But this would be specific. It would be general fund tax money to to have then all the buildings, the paint with two coats. They feel very confident at minimum would last ten years. I think it actually has a ten year guarantee of no fading or or gets repainted. So we are recommending than that puts DPW in pretty good shape, building wise, not to mention the equipment. I'll pause there. Julie.
I have questions right now about the roof. What is the current roof color? Is it gray?
The, yeah, it's just tin and, yeah, they're going to reseal it and everything.
Why are we doing black on a roof when in the summer it's like eighty five, ninety degrees sometimes? I just I don't, I'm not sure why it's got to be black, a black.
The guy that builds pole barn buildings suggested it, taking all of those variables into account.
I don't know. We did a gray one and it's performed really well, like a steel roof gray on a couple, a barn and a house and in it's like it doesn't superheat when it's hot. It's just neutral.
Yeah, we've our, we, if the council wishes to make those type of decisions, I'll need to know that in the future by policy that's left to staff, and we've already ordered and committed to the colors of the building, and it was based on the person who builds these buildings all the time.
I have one question, Jim.
Go ahead.
For the capital assignments out of heavy equipment, so after the John Deere twenty thousand expense, the balance remaining would be twenty five, and then after the ten thousand for the next, the balance would then be fifteen, correct?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Jim, it's Danny. Are our guys going to paint it or?
No, it's going to be professionally done.
Okay, all right.
Not that our guys are not professional.
Wow, no, yeah.
They're 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 professional Department of Public Works employees.
Yes, exactly. And and their their time is better spent tending to the properties and such. So I I think it's all phenomenal. You know, we've got some great people and we need great equipment. This is, this goes right along with that.
Yeah, I do have one more, one more item. And then entertain questions as well on it, on any of the the requests. We have worked and have discussed in prior fiscal years, the need to update our technology to move to a more paperless type organization. Part of that is is once we get back into meeting in person, and even if we have Zoom meetings of the future, to get appropriate equipment into our council's hands. And we're looking to purchase not, we want all of the equipment to be the same. We have checked with IT right, so they can appropriately remote in. We would fall under the technology policy of the village underneath this, but they would be Dell Latitude fifty three hundred two and one Chromebook enterprise units. It does have a little bit higher capacity and memory that we asked to be quoted out. We'd order a total of nine. There would be two staff members as well as seven council members that would be assigned the Chromebooks. And we used governmental pricing through the Dell governmental plan to ensure the lowest price point. And the total would not exceed, I want to make sure I have this number right, because I think it's seventy five hundred dollars. Yeah, nope, I'm I'm upping it to seventy five hundred dollars for to the council because we upgraded the amount of memory in in the units, plus wanted the Microsoft package installed. The, we have been saving for this unit, the funding sources, prior assignments in our capital plan. And the balance after the purchase of these units will be just approximately nineteen thousand dollars remaining in that assignment. And I do have the Dell quote here, if we need the exact figure, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Jim, just a statement for for new members on the council. We actually visited this issue, I think, two years ago. We discussed this, and I I think at the time, we had, we had voted to move forward with this, and one thing led to another, and it just didn't, didn't go. So this isn't new, just so everybody knows.
Originally, we sent what unit a council member would be most comfortable with, and it was different between Mac and Windows based, and and then it moved into our our IT support wants it all Windows based. That's why we're going with the Dell unit. They want the ability to remote in. If there's an issue to fix it remotely in that type of thing. So that's why I got put on the back burner dur- during that time, and and now we're presenting it.
But just for the new, the newer members, this this is an issue that we, or a a subject we talked about two years ago, so.
Yeah, man, as you can see, we've we've been actively putting money aside for this as as the rest of the capital improvements we're looking at. You know, Jim did have a couple of headers in there, but for all, it's within our financial budgeting we've we've done over the last several years, so everything, you know, barring any negative events.
Yeah, and I'll correct the amount. It's not to exceed eighty five hundred. It's actually eighty four oh five sixty four. And I believe, I'd have to check, I think that Dell quote was put into the packet, the most updated one, but we were talking with them Friday at different uses that that would would be. But the remaining balance is that nineteen thousand dollars and save money as it goes towards technology.
So we have a few, someone wants to cover the truck, the the John Deere tractor, the fenders, the building paint, Chromebook. Now would be the time to ask questions or of staff.
I think that the Chromebooks are a great program. I mean, that's going to be really helpful for those that want to use it and take that functionality. I mean, look at us, what we've been doing the last year on Zoom. You know, if everyone had the same Chromebook from the get go, we'd all be in the same meetings and no issues, and we'd all have the same technology.
Jim, on the pickup truck, are we purchasing that through the same program as we did the police car?
Yes, it's through the my deals program.
Okay.
And I will blind copy all council members, the exact quote from from Dell, so then that'll list out your, the specific specs and that.
Would that be the same with the John Deere tractor?
Yes, the the John Deere tractor doesn't come out of my deals, but it comes out of a governmental program that guarantees it's the, it's the low price.
So it appears that the only change is in technology, so it's eighty four hundred sixty dollars. So if there's no further discussion, what is the council's pleasure?
Trustee Keller, I move to approve as amended all total recommendations to staff. Trustee Olson, my second.
We have a motion by President Pro Temp Keller for approval in the amounts and items that listed above, supported by trustee Olson here. No further questions or comments. I'll take a roll call vote trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill, yes, trustee Reester.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Down, this is down here, just saying no.
Yes, Jim.
Okay, trustee Olson. We'll edit that out of the commercial. President Pro Temp Keller.
Saturday Night Line, yeah.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
And President Frisbee.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And as we said, I think I want to take note also, you know, back oh, and I plan on after the budget is finalized in the month of July, reaching out to the Vicksburg Foundation, we usually, the village president, myself, update them at kind of the state of the village to their board. And I want to take note to highlight, they assisted in some capital purchase items in the last four years, and especially three and four years ago, needed things for DPW, like a half the cost of a crane truck really helped out with the VAC truck that we see being used quite a bit. But what that did, that's compounded the village to be able to purchase all of these items fully cash, not using your tax money, so it it compounds out. So I look forward to reporting back to them that those investments are still paying off, that they provided us three and four years ago. So a shout out there. And I guess I I want to take and we'll be given a more detailed presentation leading up to the twenty eighth, but it also highlights in what we do in January in assigning and committing levels of money that limit these future financial liabilities that we can predict the village will incur. So so I do appreciate that.
What do we have in front of us now? Third quarter budget amendments?
Yes, this is a small document.
Yeah.
I will let the the full council know that this is is all standard in in that we do each year and in each quarter. The third quarter is a a little bit thicker of a document. And it and it also is impacted this year by the amount of infrastructure project, so so the different amendments we have listed out in the water and sewer funds. At this detail at this meeting, it saves myself a considerable amount of time, fast forwarding to October because though Michelle is 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 gets saddled with a lot of the burden of the audit, my section in that process is impacted if we did not make these amendments. So I have listed these out. I sent them prior to sending them to the council. I did send them to the financial committee as well. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions on amendment. I could read each one if that's the preference of the council. But basically, again, high altitude, these amendments ensure each quarter that we're transparent to the public. We we present to the council in detail where where money is at within the village currently. What happens from here, if the council approves these amendments, Michelle and her team will input all this. The goal is by the end of the week, but certainly by next week, because it's tying into to utility deadline as well. And then it gets uploaded in our ClearGov system. So our citizens will get that full transparency as well through through the website. So so that's the whole motivation to to get this done, but be happy to answer any specific question, but we would look for a motion and support to implement these amendments.
I do have a few questions.
Sure.
Well, and just one, I think grammatical thing that I had on the second item on the beginning, Millsaw Creek was listed. I believe that was supposed to be Sawmill Creek. But questioning on the business and non-business licensing fees. So talk about how we switched to the new permitting agency that we're contracted with. So noticing those removals there, was that just used as a pass through previously where we'd taken the payment and then it had gone through to the other entity?
Yeah, the the old entity was a pass through. We didn't even take a an administrative cut, even though it took up staff time in that. And the reason that decision was was made by staff and supported by prior councils. We didn't want to pass costs to people who are investing in those permits to update property or or invest new. The current arrangement is we're a member of a co-op, if you will, that oversees this. So we pay a two hundred dollar. I think it is. I can get the exact amount. It's it's at a level the village manager can improve. They, we, we have have impact, I'll say, on on different rates if it were ever to get there. But it's the checks go to them, stay with them. They present a list every month of approved permits along with the pricing to the village. So we're we're made aware of that each month. But it's a far better system for for staff. And that's why, and it's reflected, then we don't have to worry about it in the budget. It won't even be a part of the budget, except the those minimal expenses to be a member of the co-op.
And then just one other little thing I wanted to ask about the longevity I saw was still in there. Is this the last budget that's going to list longevity? Because I know that we moved to get rid of that in this.
Yeah, there be when we get in, I think it's the twenty first of June, we'll be presenting staffing along with any wage increases for the next fiscal year. It will not include longevity that, except again, to Rick's point, remember, and I did when we did cut out longevity, and that might have been what Rick was thinking about. The longevity is in the police officer's contract and it's only fifty dollars per year they serve. So it's all, it's it's not a percentage impact. It's a definitive known liability. So so you will see it for the police department, but no one else.
Okay, that was it for me. Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Merrill, do you have anything that you'd like to ask of staff? Mr. Olson?
The only I can say is we, I now understand why we cut down all the trees in downtown Vicksburg is to make the paper for this. So.
I I I hope everyone can really understand why why Jim's doing this now and not waiting till, you know, months before the audit. It's best that we keep up on this every quarter. This particular one is pretty tenuous. So I'm sure if you have any questions after this meeting, reach out to Jim, you know, he'll give you some understanding, some clarity on it. So don't take this as end all as far as what you know about it. Ms. Reaster, while she's coughing.
Goodness. No, I was just gonna say, I feel pretty comfortable the fact that we have it all written down in front of us and that it's going to eventually be in front of the public if they want to look at it. So I feel comfortable not going through this line by line right now. Because if they if they're interested, they want to see it, they can.
Yeah. Mr. Holmes?
No, no comments.
Mr. Keller?
I'm good. Excellent job by staff on this.
Yeah, and I I echo that. Thank you. So with that, what is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve the amendments as given.
Mr. Holmes with the motion to have staff implement the amendments as presented.
Trustee Wagner, support.
I I think trustee Wagner gets gets the support. Here are no other comments or questions. Roll call vote. Trustee Merrill. I I'll just.
Are you getting it?
I'm not, I'm not getting verbal. That's all right. That's all right. Thank you. Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee, trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Man.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. So we have tabled this last week on the request of our social district policy to include a no smoking ban. And so we table it to tonight to just pick up the discussion again. I believe there was some requests made of staff to to do some background checks and on ourselves to you know, talk with the community and get an understanding of of the implications. You know, this is so new and so young to us. And I just agenda, did we have an opportunity to ask other?
We we did. There's some of the data specific to social districts. We, Andrew Horn is researching and it's the the information in totality hasn't come back to be able to 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 state this one has it or this one doesn't. He did, I had a conversation with Andrew today. And they're going to go through another wave of different requests, including the state and and to get the public documents. However, what we did do is look at municipalities reference rules involving smoking. And one thing we've did discover is that the majority and and it's a it's what we would consider a super majority of municipalities we looked at, including here in Kalamazoo County, do have rules impacting smoking on their public parks. And then how that is normally articulated as part of the parks rules is they are designated smoking areas within a park. And outside of that designated area, there is no smoking. So we we tried to, the city of Kalamazoo does not have a a rule on the social district. But also said in their parks within the social district, it's covered by the park rule. So from that conversation, it propelled us into starting in most of those we could locate on the municipal websites and that the park rules. The other thing we did look at and we probably weren't I guess, you know, glossed over too quick. Each, there would be multiple designated areas that people from the five establishments would have a designated area to smoke. Those areas would be connected, if you will, to the different businesses and I could like the hideaway would be the back alley that's not in the social district. The distant whistle would be the back parking lot. We could make an area. Main Street's a little bit unique, but it would be the the back towards the parking lot. Jasper's would be in the back alley outside of Liberty Lane East. Vickers has a designated area within their outside deck, but we would also have, if you will, to the north of that. So that's an option. We can certainly look to explore upon the council's decision whether, you know, I don't, our park that we currently have in the district, Oswalt Parks, rather small at sixty four by ninety two, but we could potentially look at inside the social district, if it was a council's, to to designate specific smoking areas, i.e. like other municipalities do with their parks. I'll fully confess, I I haven't studied the park ordinances in depth like I have in the last two weeks. Our ordinances for our park rules are actually set by the village manager. So we just use the same rules that are assigned there, but internally, we've had a conversation. You know, that's probably as we go through this process, we we update the park rules as well. So I'll pause there and and I know I I think communication went direct to the council from a citizen, but I'll pause and listen to any questions or comments.
Well, I I for one like the idea, as did one of the other license holders I talked to about having a you know, recommended smoking area. You know, if you did locate a smoking area that was away from a residential building and and convenient and to have the village put in, you know, whether it's DDA money or what, put in a smoking station. So we could have it on the map, you know, when they bring up on the the Q code or that that code and have the bar, the licensed owner say, this is our preferred area that, you know, you go over and smoke is not to, you know, interfere and and ruin the lives of others, you know. So I I, from my perspective, I believe we can do it without legislation, but just have more recommendation and have the license holders, you know, help buy into this. Ultimately, it's their patrons and their business that they're wanting to keep. I think they're motivated to assist us and and assist the residents to make them more viable or healthy living conditions for everybody.
Yeah, if if I can, Mr. Frisbee, and certainly the on on the actual, I I was going to say, if if the council made a motion to postpone until June seventh, I think at at that time.
Bro, Jim, bro, you just broke. It's your computer.
Was that it? Was that not the opposed?
Hey, Mac.
Just kidding. Yeah, even the internet knows. Sometimes I talk too much. The, but on a motion to postpone would give us the added that that Andrew Horn is looking at and would they give staff the, we could certainly come out with a new map with those specific listed areas that are outside the social district as well as inside the social district. And and probably would be in a position as well to to present the twenty one, twenty two park rules to the council as well. So we kind of almost make it a fiscal year thing on park rules that gets incorporated as the budget with with council approval on the manager's recommendation, but and I'll pause there.
Jim, it's Rick. If I could. I'd just like to remind everybody that prior to one citizen bringing this to our attention, this wasn't an issue. Like to remind the council also that we had several discussions. We had several meetings about the social district. This never came up. It's an issue now. Why? Because one citizen brought it to our attention. And I'm not saying that that's not legitimate. Every citizen has a right for their voice to be heard. But from my perspective, folks, I I'm challenged on several fronts with this. First off, I would ask, is this going to be an ordinance or or what is this going to be, Jim?
No, it'd be treated like a a park rule and enforcement takes place no different than if if one of the listed park rules or or a rule of the social district. We have rules where you can be inside drinking and and not, it gets a little different with alcohol. But if if someone violated a park rule, they would be asked to adhere to the park rule.
And who would ask that, Jim?
We, well, our police department. And if I I don't know if it's multiple people, but if I'm coming through.
You are now.
Okay. It it would be enforced by the police department. They'd ask to comply with the rule. If a citizen refuses to comply with the rule, they're trespassing. They'd be asked to leave the park. Ultimately, it would be in the village of Vicksburg in a a citable and potentially arrestable offense if someone absolutely wanted to engage in a violation of a park rule and thus continued to trespass. The the representative of the village is is the police department and they would be be have the authority to take action, no different than if it's a rule within the social district. If a citizen doesn't comply with the rule and are asked to comply and and on the worst case scenario refuses, then they'd be trespassing within the social district. I think in application of it, overwhelmingly, it's an educational point. And this is used on far more laws that we have. It is the last case to make an arrest or 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 a citation. And I I so it is enforceable. It would be enforceable in that manner, but I I think it's a tactic that that our police department led by Chief Sanderson. It's an educational thing, no different than if someone steps outside of the boundary with a beer. Hey, here's the boundaries. We have them listed. Please enjoy the park or whatever might fit. Same way with with if we had designated smoking areas. Educate the public, educate someone who might be smoking within the district. Here's where we have proper dispense units and that type of thing. And and as Mr. Frisbee said, appropriately invest in that. I would add one thing and I'll take responsibility for it when we put together the social district. I I've had other citizens in my tenure as a village manager talk to me about this issue, talk to me specifically about those that gather at Maine and Prairie at certain nights. So I I don't and again, it's my responsibility. I'll 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 take that that we didn't have this conversation prepping the social district. But but I didn't want to leave the council with the impression it I think one person put it back on the radar, but there's been multiple people that have discussed it with me, the the smoking downtown. So I apologize.
We're now bringing parks into the social district. Are you just using that as a comparison? I'm I'm confused, Jim. What are we? What are we talking about here? The social district or parks or both?
Okay, I don't know if I'm, the internet is is causing a problem. But I I asked, I was asked specifically about smoking in the social district. Right now I'm waiting on the details from the municipality. This is a very new tool that municipalities are using to have an economic impact positively in their downtown. Far more tenured are a rule of parks in municipalities. We do have a park in the municipality. We have had internal conversations that we envision going into twenty twenty two truly looking at expanding the social district to include Clark Park. I've been asked on the other side, hey, we have an ordinance that says no alcohol in parks. You have a park in a social district or even out at the historic village during farmers market with with the sale of wine. Also, within that ordinance allows the village to create an event within the park to have alcohol. So it's not an either or. It's one a question of do municipalities regulate smoking at the micro level? That answer is definitively yes. Most have a well-established rule in their parks that will prohibit smoking in the majority of the park, however, allowing a designated smoking area. The same concept, I believe, would apply in a social district if the council chose to go in that direction. We could develop where smoking is allowed and thus where it's not. Currently, we know there is already a rule that would prohibit the smoking in right in front of entryways and exit points. I think why I kind of in the last week or ten days and looking at it lean towards designated smoking areas. It helped, when I talked to all five business owners, they were in support of it. And I think they're the best to gauge what their customer needs are. And I do think, and again, I'll take responsibility for that, we should have, I should have specifically been more detailed in trying to come up with a designated smoking area within the social district that's far enough away from these establishments that were upside living, so. It, it was used in that manner.
I think, I think that we, to me, it's compromise. And I think that there are people like myself who have a real problem with smoke. And so having the smoking designated smoking area makes sense to me. And so I, I'm talking about compromise. We, we our whole system has gone very far away from compromise. And I think we need to, to continue to compromise. And so to me, people like myself who can't handle smoke, I, I would go along with a smoking area because then I wouldn't go there. You know what I mean? So I think, I think we need compromise. It's not one or the other, it's compromise.
You know, compromise is one thing. Policy and law is another.
Well, but you can use compromise by setting laws.
Yeah, I mean, so do we just identify those areas, encourage the use of those areas without mandating a rule? I mean, that, that's a viable option and
I agree, Tim. This is simple, guys. Let's enforce the twenty-five foot rule in front of the establishments where all the cigarette butts are at. This is what I told Mr. Callen. Said, Mr. Callen, you, you and your family have done a great job of investing in a downtown community. And I feel bad that you're having to have smoke come through your windows. But if we enacted the law, the state law that says no smoking within the twenty-five foot of the entranceway, it goes away. And he agreed. And so that gang walked tonight. I, I ask all of you, I, I actually visit these places on a regular basis. Yeah, I do, I admit it, I'm sorry. What I'm saying is if you go there, you'll notice that they have these smoking areas out front and that people are loitering around at night or typically dusk and into the evening hours. If we enact the laws and then we work with the businesses and say, listen, you know, how can we, how can we move this away from the public area? This is resolved immediately without any additional discussion or ordinances, or we can tab it and say, hey, let's, let's address it in the future if we need to. If, if it becomes a significant issue, if we're overwhelmed, you know, with mobs of smokers, then, then let's address it. I'll let you know this, I've lived here my whole life like all of you. I've walked around the community. I've never once thought to myself, wow, and I'm not a smoker. I don't, there's not a smoking issue in Vicksburg. There's not a smoking issue in Vicksburg. And that's what I'm saying, we're making out of a molehill because one citizen came to us, one.
One person. It's, it's our people, it's not just one. And the thing is, I, I've sat out in front of the distant whistle and, and I'm sitting there having a beer and then somebody comes and sits down there smoking right next to me. That's, I sent an email to you, Rick, and maybe even get a chance to read it.
I read it, Julie, and I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
But if you're seated and then somebody sits next to you, the twenty-five foot rule, then they're not complying with it. So then it becomes kind of testy. And I don't, I would want to move and if I'm running a tab or I got food coming, then it kind of becomes a pain for, for me and others. So I, I like the idea of some designated quadrant where there be behind, I, I detailed this to you, but from what I've seen, there's only five places they're okay with it. So I, I didn't see a huge problem with it.
Well, as, as being a former cigarette smoker, and as I said earlier, when it was a cigar, I've never met a person that was unwilling to come to tell me my smoke was offending them. Right? They came right to me and I would say, yes, I apologize and I moved away. Or you go talk to the owner and say they're breaking the state twenty-five foot rule, sitting in the, in my area, smoking a cigarette, you have every right to tell the business owner to make it stop. Or the individual. To me, I, I think there's a point in time where we just have some leniency and some courtesy with each other, and it goes both ways with the smokers and non-smokers. Understand what the rules are and, and just general politeness. You know,
And I stopped in to saw Steve Shemp tonight and we're talking about the mask issue and about how he's taking it on both sides. And to Gil's point, compromise, you would, you would think that removing masks and saying to people, hey, you know, wear your mask if you feel you need to, would not be an issue. Well, what you're doing is you're separating people. You're creating one camp and another. And then you're asking the owners then to mediate it. And that's why they're not, they're not enacting the state laws today is because they don't want to get in the middle of it. And that's my, that's my point here is that if we go, if we go creating this and we build something, we're creating a layer of, of it on an issue that my question is, do we really need to get into it? Or can we simply say, listen, if it evolves to an issue, let's address it?
I believe there's ways to management prior, prior to getting to that extreme. And we do have to remember that post the car show, the downtown is going to be, you know, they'll be smoking out back. And none of us will be walking out front, sitting out front.
Good point, Tim. They're going to have a good period of time where they're going to be in different locations and they're already going to be making those habits while it's all under construction.
Maybe it's a time now we, we, you know, do while the construction and put identify those areas and put the smoking stations there. And, and we're, we're all habitual people or by habit, you know. You know, if we start to integrate people, this is where we want you to go without creating a law, then, then the tendency is to continue with that.
Just, just so everybody understands too, that with the, the state rule as far as being away from twenty-five feet from a business, it's the business that gets fined, I believe. If somebody's not in compliance, I don't think it's the individual. I think it's the business gets fined. So you know, I, 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 I've talked to a couple of people, I go both sides of this thing. I can tell everybody here that a couple of years ago, I was down distant whistle sitting out when they had their little tables. And I had a cigar and I had somebody come outside and tell me, you need to put that out. Which I wasn't, there was nobody around me, but I did. And I said, no, not a problem. I have not been downtown at night to, to witness how things are going. I don't really envision people walking around, everybody smoking cigarettes as they're walking to and fro, but I do, I have driven by the hideaway and I have seen four or five people standing outside of the, the door having a cigarette. And you know, I think all that needs to get cleaned up. I think if that gets cleaned up, a lot of the issues that we're hearing about right now possibly resolve themselves. That's my two cents worth.
There's any, any other discussion on this? You know, so we're, we're privy to, to make any motion or comment, we'd like to, so I, so I just ask of you all, what is, what is the pleasure of the council at this time?
I, I have a quick question. Sir, President. Jim, did I understand you that you, you, your position, you, your staff's, staff's recommendation right now is to maybe get some more time to formulate, not only because there isn't really any type of park rules that are set and try to have this put together for the, for the end of June meeting? Is that where I kind of heard you saying?
Well, I'd say prior to the end of June, it would come either the, the seventh or twenty-first. If, if the council so desired, we, we could present different scenarios. If that's, if that's the choice of the council, I mean, we're going to carry out what the majority of council members want, reference this issue.
I would just, I would, I would ask us to vote on it. I would ask us a thumbs up or a thumbs down on this. Let's, let's move, let's move on. Yes or no? And if it's, if it's, it seems to me that we're continuing to kick the can down the road on this with all the appreciation for Mr. Mallory. He's got other things going on. I it fits, if it's, we're going to enact smoking rules, then, then we'll need to figure out how we're going to do that, but
If, if I'm hearing Mr. Holmes correctly, he, if he's calling the motion that was postponed till tonight, the motion would be to incorporate no smoking in the social district. So the motion would be an affirmative vote. Adds the no smoking rule to the social district.
I make that, that's my motion. Thank you.
He, he would
Motion to accept the staff record. Jim?
Yeah, yeah, just he's, if I heard him correctly, hasn't, the motion is, was discussed on the last agenda. I don't believe a motion was formally made. It was articulated on that agenda. And then it was postponed and moved forward to tonight.
You could just call previous question.
I, and I believe that's actually what Mr. Holmes is doing. The Congress is, is calling the question to the vote. Which, which would end the full conversation.
Motion, do we have a second?
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
Okay, just so we're clear, so trustee Holmes has made the motion to incorporate the no smoking rule within the social district. It's supported by trustee Wagner. We'll do a roll call vote. And voting in the affirmative will be in support of the no smoking rule. Voting in the negative or no will be to not have the rule.
Julie. Question, sorry. If we go forward with this and in the future we rethink that there could be designated smoking in the district, then, and I, I think there already is kind of designated areas. That's why the owners of the five businesses weren't having much problems. So I
To answer what I believe to answer what I believe is being asked is any rules within the social district could be modified in the future, no different than the park rules, one way or the other. If it goes down, it could come up again. If it gets supported, it could be modified again.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's kind of what I was trying to say.
Okay. Okay, again, the motion is to add the so, the no smoking within the social district boundary. Motion made by trustee Holmes and supported by trustee Wagner. Roll call vote, trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill. Trustee Olson.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you. President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
No.
Trustee Holmes.
No.
President Frisbee.
No.
The motion passes four to three.
It's very interesting to be at this point of, of dissent internally. I don't think we've ever found ourselves in this, in this position, so. It is so, but we've got a lot of work, you know. One made the comment about putting it on the table today will help reduce staff's future work. I, I just think we just increased their work exponentially and what we have ahead of us. So with that, the motion passes, but we do have to identify these areas of the smoking, but the way y'all just worded it, it cannot be in the social district. You know that. And so anything they do is going to be outside of the property. And those that come down there and enjoy the social district cannot go out there and have a drink and a smoke. I'll leave it at that. So we got more here on the tree committee.
Yeah, before the
Do we need further discussion?
No, no, I'll wait to the, my time under village managers report.
Oh, yeah, I just want to interject that real quick, number, E. Okay. Talking, I know we talked about this several meetings ago. And I just wanted to make sure I was within my purview as president to do this. So I've got affirmative affirmation on it. I know it's been done in the past. I'm going to create a tree committee. And, you know, I know it's not been that long ago. It will be a non-binding financial, it will not be a financial committee in any way. They won't have access to village funds. They will be going after external grant monies. You know, donations. We'll look to them to, you know, evaluate the village to put in more trees, to evaluate what trees make sense. Got several people lined up and then willing to do it that have a lot of experience in that area. I know Gail's one of them.
I am. But that's fine.
But we, we do have an opportunity here that we've taken a lot of older trees down. There's a lot of older trees in the village that could be affected and could come down soon. And, and you look at, what is the one comment that we, I think we've all heard now? Oh boy, the village looks naked. And, you know, with just what we've done downtown. So yeah, we need, you know, a healthy tree environment, a healthy environment for all of us. Where they're put at, in the right locations, the right kind of tree. So there's others out there that have a lot of experience in the nursery business that I'm going to be calling on. So I just wanted to put that out there. I'd like to do it. I'd like to have a motion of support by the committee to, to move forward with that. So that's what I'm asking you of tonight.
Trustee Keller's moved.
Yeah, and Julie, real quick.
And supportive.
Very good. I thought you had a question.
So trustee Keller made a motion to approve the tree committee supported by trustee Merrill. Here, no further comments or questions. We'll roll call vote, trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Olson. Trustee Olson.
Yes. Yes.
Trustee Reaster. Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Okay. We're back on track, people. Very good. And that leads us up to Mr. Mallory's, uh, manager report.
Yes. Uh, update on, on the infrastructure project. Uh, the most significant update is the fact that we have identified right now thirty eight locations within this route that we're going to have to invest in updating the service into the homes. So it's not impacted by the lead rule with, uh, state oversight. We have approved that. It is going to come at an expense close to, uh, a hundred thousand dollars. Um, but, uh, it is the appropriate thing to do under the legislation. Uh, while these roads are opened up and to ensure, uh, the most significant reason for this is thirty of the locations were on Prairie Street, which was serviced by a nineteen thirty five, uh, water line that was led. So, uh, um, that is the, the most significant um, of the thirty eight. The other locations were in the three and four hundred block of Spruce Street. So those are being changed over, uh, and I know President Pro Temp Keller gets daily witness of this, but those, uh, um, are being done. A big, uh, Randy and Chad skippers have been instrumental in securing the consent forms from those thirty eight locations that provide us a legal justification to, to enter the property and, and assist the citizens, um, with this need. Other than that, again, the, the schedule is right on, is about now, six to seven days behind the schedule. We've had good weather here in the, in the last week. And I think considerable effort has been made to keep the streets open. I know it's an inconvenience. I know uh, certainly, um, if it was impacting me in my daily life, um, but overall, uh, especially on the inquiries we're getting from citizens living in the area, they're very appreciative of the communication. They're appreciative of the crews that are down there with daily contact with them, uh, letting them know. I have made contact. We'll follow up tomorrow to confirm the car show is going, so there won't be downtown construction during that time. And, uh, the crew from Milbacher assured me that just off the outline area, they'll get it, uh, in the absolute best shape they can. I'll pause there if there's any specific questions on the infrastructure project. Again, we meet every Tuesday morning at ten AM with the, uh, Milbacher, uh, lead management, the engineers and, and village staff, DPW and myself, so and Alex. So.
Jim, yeah. Yeah, Danny, um, have you got an end date to have the roads repaved in Vicksburg or?
Uh, in, in the con, I can only go by the contract, which has it in spring of twenty twenty two. I believe it will be before that as it moves on. I think what the east side of town will see first, and if anyone's been near Spruce Street, they're, they're prepping that pretty well to, to get the first coat of asphalt. Um, so I think that first coat of asphalt will come much sooner, I believe, in the sixty to seventy five day area for the Spruce Street. And then it'll be appropriately a couple of weeks behind for Prairie, a first coat of asphalt, just the base coat is what I think technically term it. They want, they want to do the curbs, sidewalks and final coat as much of the project as they can do at once, which benefits the village in the long run to have those runs as well. So. Here, no other questions. I.
I think we're a little bit further ahead than a lot of other communities when it comes to lead abatement. Uh, just, you know, I, we kind of fell into it from a timing standpoint, but you know, that's one positive in our hat and a feather in our cap, right? And communicate that, you know, with the residents around that, uh, you know, we're, we're ahead of the game. Jim, how much, what percent do you think will be? It's a pretty large percent. I know there's a lot of unknowns because we don't know every lead connection, but just, just hitting these thirty three is.
Yeah, we're using the round number that there's five hundred connections that would have to be updated over the next twenty years. Uh, we think that's pretty close, give or take. So we believe at the end of this project will be within a couple percentage points, one way or another of ten percent. I will let the council know that we have had, uh, initial meetings, uh, with representatives from Baker Tilly who, who analyze our rate structure for utilities and we are doing absolutely everything we can to ensure that this investment in updating these lead lines don't impact the bottom line for our customers and utility rates. Um, and that will come on June twenty eighth. It's just a ton of mathematics involved. By the state law, we're required to, to replace at least five percent a year. We have the first formal status update to the state of Michigan has to be submitted prior to January first of twenty twenty five. Um, and we're keeping all that on pace to make sure that we have the village in a spot that we've, we've honored what the state's requiring us to do.
Jim, quick question on that. Um, for the five percent per year requirement that we're held to, uh, by the statute, can we work ahead of? Say if we get to ten percent within one year, does that give us, you know, the next twelve months to get to where we need to be for fifteen percent? Does it go forward at all? Or do we have to hit five percent each year?
Well, uh, the question becomes like this, because a lot of municipalities are looking at, you know, needed, if, just what we're doing. We're replacing sewer, but we're opening up a road, so do it now. Um, the question becomes if we're at ten percent this year, does that, and we don't have an infrastructure project next year, does that count for next year? Those questions have been asked. I just don't, I haven't been provided the answers. We, we've asked all the advisors and experts and it's a, it's relatively, again, new legislation that was mandated by the state without a lot of the flow chart completely filled out. So once we know that, that's going to help us in our, and we have a meeting coming up with the engineers, our internal team, specifically looking at the next three years of capital projects as they involve water and sewer that we can predict. And how, how, and predictably those projects will incur within our older infrastructure, which predictably are going to be letter galvanized runs. So, um, I can assure you twenty hours of my week is spent on this topic, listening to experts and, and we're holding them to, to advise the village the best they can.
I appreciate it, Jim. Thank.
And I think Julie had a question.
I just, so we're, we're figuring thirty some properties, just kind of guesstimating. And if, if it runs into more than that and it's torn up, the streets are, you know, will we go ahead with those? If it exceeds a certain number, um.
Yeah.
I'm being selfish. I'm just.
No, no.
Building and others, but, um, I just, I have a feeling it might be more.
It, 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 it could be, and I, I, I assure this council, um, the foundation. I, I think everyone on the call, the one that witnesses it the most and it's consistent is, is Alex Lee witnesses it. My decision on this is for the health and safety of the citizens. I, I, for myself, I believe it's the fundamental thing government is to provide. It's a known issue. They didn't know it in nineteen thirty five. They didn't know it in nineteen ninety two, when the last time that street was touched. We do know it today. Um, take away quote unquote law. We know it's the right thing to do. What we're in, and we're always gonna, I'm always gonna make the decision based on that. Um, some might ask, well, that was a hundred thousand dollar decision. We poured with, with the experts on what that would impact our current reserves in the, and we had north of six hundred thousand dollars because we knew this issue was coming up. We, we did, the timing wise, it was higher than we predicted. We did not know thirty homes were connected to that nineteen thirty five line. We felt some would have been connected to the nineteen ninety two line. It turns out only three were. Um, so, so the, the decision, we, we analyzed the finances, but we would have figured out because we're not gonna subjectively pick who gets one and who doesn't. So when we uncover one, we're gonna make the decision based on health and safety with looking at the finances to ensure we don't go into debt. But, um, we, we made the call under the emergency purchasing policy due to the timing and the dirt was on turn. And now I'm reporting that back to the, to the council. I did have a non-quorum group of council members in about a two hour discussion. Uh, no decisions were made at all, but I wanted them to at least to hear the conversation between me and the experts on this very specific topic. So.
Okay.
Good.
And Julie, just to confirm, those thirty three are known. They actually found them and are replacing them. We anticipate up to five hundred, maybe more of, of others left to do. So it's, it's a big job ahead of us.
Yeah, and we're, we're hopeful that, uh, when, when the formulas and we're getting close to knowing on the amount of money the village will intake under the federal stimulus. We do know that, um, infrastructure's included. Um, and, and we're hopeful to then be able to apply a specific amount of money to this issue. Uh, to ensure, again, we're, we're very understanding that it's the council's desire to keep these utility rates as low as absolute possible. So we're, we, 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 there isn't a multiple times right now throughout the week that we aren't digging into those numbers.
Any more questions on the, uh, the update?
Um, speaking of utility rates, um, I am, you know, the, uh, I will try to do a screen share here. Let me find where it is. Is, we've had a unique, again, we're in a worldwide pandemic. We start in March of twenty twenty, state legislator precluded municipalities from shutting off any customers for utilities. Absolutely in agreement that I believe that was the proper course of action. And that continued until March thirty first of twenty twenty one with the state precluding, um, municipalities from shutting people, individuals off. In about September, we began tracking the people who hadn't paid going back prior to January first of twenty twenty, because the unique thing for the village was the pandemic hit in March as our first quarter billing cycle was ending. So where we experience people who, for whatever personal reason, uh, might not pay their utility bill until they get a shut off notice. Um, though we kept those communications going every quarter. We waived late fees, the first two quarters. Those that were late up to that point, we sent, uh, formal notice to those individuals and to the entire system, along with advising the council that late fees would be reinstituted, uh, within the third quarter. We then sent certified letters to individuals, um, heading into the December months that continued to be on that list. We again sent a certified letter in March of this year, and I'll get into the details, but I also wanted to send or have in front of you a copy of the last bill that went to, uh, people on the shut off list. As you can see, that last bill had in red, a shut off notice in two different locations. It had, um, to how to avoid the shut off notice with all the information. We went, and I can bring this back up, but it's with everything, um. We then identified individuals again that hadn't paid. We got the police department involved just to make personal contact. No, it police, it's just utilizing a very small staff. So instead of utilizing DPW that's busy, um, I mean, every week Denise Harold has called these individuals. Uh, her and Michelle have worked together with Diane Gilling to send these letters out to certify on the villages invested in those extra steps. But we wanted to go the extra step and have personal contact with the village representative, informing these individuals who had not paid that, that this state law or this state oversight has stopped and were required by law to turn these utilities off. So I wanted to update the council. These notices have gone out that, that utility shut offs will occur tomorrow. Currently, as of five o'clock tonight, there is an anomaly here. If we have in this circumstances, a high percentage of people who are facing shut offs will pay online. If they paid online today, we'll get that report tomorrow. And that and, and tomorrow morning's going to be busy for staff. I'll explain that as we go. But currently, there were forty one accounts on the shut off list. Um, twenty one of the forty one accounts are late only on the last quarter. That was due April eighth. Seven of the accounts are late on the last two quarters. Six of the accounts are late on the last three quarters. We believe one of those, because today we worked out with a agency to be able to help those individuals. And I think it really, and I probably, um, in some aspects, maybe should have had Denise here, but she deserves a lot of praise as she has put in a ton of investments. We have probably double digits where Denise has contacted entities, nonprofit churches, any Reese County, state, any resource we could find if individuals contacted us and needed help. All of this letter communication, all of the phone calls indicated that you need to contact village staff. We'll bend over backwards to prevent the shut offs. And in double digit cases, Denise has found assistance, uh, to help out. Including, I know a couple today. Four of the accounts are late for one year. And three of the counts historically allow these unpaid utility bills to go to their taxes and they pay via their tax bill. The shut off date, we extended and we extended it prior to the moratorium ended to May eighteenth, which allowed thirty more days of notice for each of these residents to contact the village to make payments. The shut off billing amount, um, does not include the current quarter that is due June first. It's prior to this current quarter. So specifically since December of twenty twenty, we started with thirty four overdue accounts in December of twenty twenty. Of those thirty four, with that, uh, what I'll turn pretty proactive and aggressive, uh, contact via staff initiating. We were down to five, twenty nine paid. Um, some of those twenty nine unfortunately didn't pay the next quarter, so they're part of, but um, in, in that time since December, each of these late accounts have received five to seven phone messages of the account's overdue status. Letters were, were not only, uh, uh, they were initially hand delivered by a police officer on December tenth, twenty twenty. Certified letters were mailed on March sixth, twenty twenty one. And again, secondary certified letters were sent on April fourteenth, twenty twenty one, advising the accounts of the shut off date of May eighteenth and requesting contact with village staff. And again, then we followed up. Three of the accounts did not have a signature returned on the certified mail. Three of the accounts did not have a signature returned on the certified mail. And we had Chief Sanderson and his team make personal contact at those addresses, so they verbally knew what was going to occur. All of the communication indicated the account must be paid by five thirty PM on May seventeenth. Tomorrow morning, staff will be attempting, and that's all staff, will be attempting phone contact with these accounts. It's our hope that we can get them paid. However, I did want to advise the council, we'll follow the law, and utility shut-offs will begin occurring after twelve PM tomorrow in the village. And we'll report back on, on the results. So I'll pause there on that specific, and then I have one comment on a another topic, Mr. Frisbee.
Any comments on the utility shut-offs? Need questions?
I, I think you have gone absolutely above and beyond with this. I mean, I, I can't thank you enough for the steps that you and staff have taken to do everything within and even exceeding your authority to try and keep these households from having their utility shut off. I mean, it's absolutely commendable, and it's sad enough that you're in the position where we now have to be shutting them off.
Yeah, good comments, Ryan. I think we all agree with the, the level of patience and consideration we gave to people's current perhaps economic situations of, at some point in time, you know, it has to end, so.
On a dollar amount, so the council's aware, it's, it's fifteen thousand dollars, not including the current quarter that's owed to the village. And another way to state it, that's five lead replacements that we could do if having that fund, so. We do appreciate that. It is not, it is the bar none in thirty-two years, the least enjoyable thing I'm facing. But I appreciate the comments too, Mr. Wagner, I really do. The, the last, and, and I'm not, but I did want to inform, we got in a little bit, that we would be presenting the, the park rules, and it's another thing I'll take accountability for. I didn't even, until I really dug into this, I didn't know it was a village manager that present and makes them. I look at the signs, I've been in the park certainly enough. But we were going to make staff recommendations on those rules as part of the budget presentation. So, and as we get there, we'll prep the council and have summaries on that as well.
Very good. Thank you for all the updates and the hard work. Appreciate it. I believe we can move on to committee reports. I believe we had a planning commission took place last week. You have an update, Rick?
I do, I do. Real briefly, gang, it was, it was, it was a brief meeting. Jim and Alex did a real nice job. Jim gave an update on infrastructure to the committee. Also, third quarti budget amendments. And then Alex did talk about the, the DDA business owner survey results, which the group was very interested in. Jim talked a little bit about needs, wants, wishes for next year's budget. And I think it's fair to say at the end that the committee members were thankful. They expressed thanks to Alex for reaching out to Julie and asking them for their input, which is, you know, was echoed a number of times. And then also in helping schedule the recent mill tours. It was great getting in there and being able to see the, the new developments that are going on at the mill at the same time. So that was, that was kind of just an overview of what was discussed. Jim, is there anything specifically you want to add, maybe?
You're muted.
Yep. Yes, I was. Thank goodness they don't have that ability when I'm walking. Yeah, that's a problem. I'm looking at a screen that has everyone juggling and that. So I don't know if it is my internet or what tonight. I apologize for that. You captured it great, Mr. Holmes. And I think it, to highlight a couple past meetings, the planning commission, which serves obviously as the oversight for the DDA, has approved like cost associated with the social district to use DDA money, that that level is at a thousand dollars, where village policy in front of a council is five thousand. So inside the, but third quarter budget amendments, that was all listed out. But when the, the planning commission has supported the investments of DDA dollars into the social district, so that's the only thing I would add.
Was Danny, was there anything you would like to add or any other?
Yeah, real quick, fire authority meetings coming up Wednesday night at six. One of the things we need to start touching on is the ambulance building. That has been offered up to us, and but the trouble is the fire authority's been dragging their feet on it a little bit. We need, we need to start kicking them in gear and, and getting them on that more. And I've talked about it with Jim and, and Chief McMillan, so we're trying to get together with Jason Gattin, the head of the fire authority over that. Real quick too, I, I attended the CATS meeting, which I, I should have probably done last meeting. But you know that U Avenue and Portage Road cleared Oakland Drive store up. They have started repaving that as of last Friday. They are working on that. They just redid the intersection of Portage Road and U Avenue. That project's to be completed by the end of June, so we're still gonna have to put up with that traffic and that for a while. But nine ninety-four Portage, we've got an update on that. It's progressing. They are a little bit ahead of schedule. If you've been up that way, Salvation Army and a couple has just lost half their parking lot to this project. And Kilgore is gonna be a real pain around that area. If you're going into Kalamazoo, don't. I'm gonna tell you point-blank St. Alpportage Road. I made two trips in there last week. I had to go down Portage Road from Washington Square to the downtown. It is horrific. That has become a motocross track, and it is not any fun. Through the CATS program, Augusta is getting one of their main bridges replaced. So they are working with the local municipalities on that. And this is a bridge that semi trucks go over every day, and they're afraid of it collapsing and possibly losing a rig there. So that's pretty much it for CATS.
Hey Danny, quick question on that. What was the building that you mentioned? What's significant about that?
The building?
Ambulance service.
Oh, well, the one down by the hospital, yeah. The old hospital, that, the owner of that has offered that up to the fire authority. Basically, Bill has said that if he dies tomorrow and his partner dies tomorrow, the fire authority has the right to that building. He's been willing to put up a couple of bays to the side of it. Point of replacing our fire department. There's cracks in the walls and this and that. We've talked about it with Jim several occasions. It's something that we have to face. Pretty much, it's up to the fire authority to replace it, not the village of Vicksburg.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Danny. So on a trustee's time, Danny, would you have anything other you'd like to add?
Oh, yeah, real quick, yeah. Scott Sanderson and Officer Guthrie and Officer Peterson, I want to thank them. This last week, we put in a nine-one-one call for an incident north of Vicksburg, up on twenty-third Street. And Vicksburg sent up Officer Peterson and Guthrie to respond to that. Make a long story short, they investigated a complaint, which I felt was necessary. And I do believe there was an arrest made, but not, but that, that's still being investigated. I want to thank Jim and Denise, Randy, DPW, for the assistance with the pavilion this last weekend. We did the Vicksburg Vintage Market, the first show of the season. This is the second big event for me this year. And we were a little slow, but we had a good steady crowd. And we did have people from as far away as Chicago and Lansing, Holland and Grand Rapids coming in. So we did see a lot more from the local area. So the trouble is too, is that, you know, there's a lot going on right now. In fact, in Vicksburg this weekend, there are three major neighborhood garage sales and an antique dealer that Julie and I know is selling out, she's getting out of the business. So twenty, twenty-third Street and TU Avenue, I'd avoid that altogether, because that's gonna be a parking lot up there. So, but thank you very much.
Hi Danny.
Okay.
Hi Julie.
Nothing to say.
Trustee Rooster?
All set.
Trustee Holmes?
First, would just say that we're, we're probably gonna have to address vaping if we address tobacco. So Mr. Mallory, I put that on the list, I guess. Secondly, would like to say happy birthday, mom, eighty-two years young. And look forward to cutting cake with you. So Evelyn Brockway, your son loves you and happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Trustee Wagner?
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, just a quick one for the Vicksburg Historic Village. The May meanders going on from one to four PM this Saturday on the village, Vicksburg Historic Village grounds. So that'll be fun. They have recruited businesses and organizations to come in and, you know, demonstrate with each other to participate in, in the activities. And then there's gonna be the volunteers to open up the buildings and showcase those as well. Even some free COVID-safe concessions that are all gonna be individually packaged and served and prepared and things like that. So it's gonna be a fun weekend. I unfortunately won't be able to attend, but my wife and other members of that committee will be. So if you're in the Historic Village area, please give it a look.
Thanks for the reminder, Ryan.
Yeah, absolutely. And similar vein to that, I want to say congratulations to my brother and sister-in-law who are completing their fourth years of residency. So they are officially gonna be attending physicians moving down to Columbus, Ohio, so that's a huge accomplishment for them.
Congratulations, all right.
Yeah.
President Proton Keller?
I'd like to thank Randy and Chad and the rest of the guys for everything they're doing on my beautiful boulevard. I know they're working hard. They're trying to, trying to get things so we at least can navigate through there. It's, it gets difficult at times, but, and I do, I do hope that what we've done tonight, that we will work with the five establishments in town and really try to define a designated area so that the people that do want to have a smoke downtown have a place to go and that they know that. So I, I, I think we need to work with, work with them as well, even though it's, it's, it's no longer acceptable down there that we at least work with them and get those places defined, so they know where they can go. So, thank you everybody.
I'll make it short and sweet. It's been a long, a long night. I, I had the honor of attending a groundbreaking for MCM Miniature Custom Molds today. And it's just, it's really exciting, right? We know what's going on. But to be there, take part of it, and to see Kevin and Steve, the co-owners, they were just excited like little kids. I mean, they're, they're just really invested in this community. It's just really neat to see that, too. You know, kudos to everyone that was involved in that, and it was a great day. So if anybody would like to carry on with conversations, we can. But if the council pleasure is to adjourn the meeting, I'd entertain that also.
President Frisbee, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by
Supported.
Motion made by trustee Wagner and supported by trustee Reaster, who would ask President Frisbee to stick on as we have Mr. Ritzma on the call. But it can be a voice call, all those in favor of getting on the meeting, say aye. As always, any opposed can stay on as long as they would like.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Give me a second.